All that.
Yep.
So before we get all the big boards and think we have the plan. I would be in agreement to say, let's have a, an open house night. I don't know what's left. School wise on the calendar for any activities that people might come to where. We could present some of those ideas or, or maybe just do a walk around and see how many. You know, community people are interested in coming to just hear about it.
Okay.
How many did you have at your last meeting for the community group?
One.
Yeah.
So.
And people are busy, but maybe they just think it's a done deal and they might wanna. Do a walk around. I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the, the design, we're, we're only doing what we're doing. It's not a five million dollars doesn't go.
No, it doesn't.
But they can at least walk through and understand kind of the concepts and what's going on and. Understand how, how and why. So we can, we can, I'll work with H M K on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move to the consent agenda.
You're gonna be famous tonight.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, sentence, motion carries.
Let Jeremy go so he can get back to parent conferences.
TJ, do you need to, are you presenting? Oh, okay, I was saying. Alright. Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight I'm gonna present on. Uh, the middle school and then next month I will present on, uh, the high school. I'll just tell you guys to start off with that I don't have a lot of quantitative data right now. Um, because it is the beginning of the school year. Oh, I better get my glasses. Okay, but I got some good qualitative data. Um, so here's the online learning platform we're, we're using right now at the middle school and high school level. And even since this, uh, was put together a week ago, uh, and skills mastered for math were up another geez one thousand and thirty seven skills. Um, E L A does look lower, but that's due to our other online learning platform for literacy, which is called Read One Eighty. But even those numbers have jumped as well. Um, the staff is really liking the use of this program due to it being tied to our state and national standards. And the ability for our students to work at different grade levels. Um, it allows them to get caught up at a significantly high rate. Especially for the ones that we're testing at the seventh grade level and might. Be at third grade level in some instances. So it's a great way for us to keep all these kids that are, where we need differentiation. Uh, to exist, we're able to do that in a, in a very efficient manner. Alright, yes, Justine?
Yes, I just had a question. Uh, so you said that staff likes this because the testing is aligned to Oregon Common Core?
Yes.
So is there going to be, and I think if I'm not mistaken, last year is when the first year that this was. Put into place, like they started using it?
Yes.
Is there going to be conversations as you guys move through like. Social studies curriculum adoption and maybe looking at like where there might be gaps in curriculum that might result in. For math or science or for any of the subjects, but like I'm thinking specifically cause social studies you're in an adoption year. Like considering you.
Yes.
For some that might fill some of those gaps.
So currently it's tied to the standards we have now. And as we look at curriculum, we need to make sure that the new curriculum that we adopt does match. The standards as they continue, as you all know, as the standards continue to evolve. Especially in the state of Oregon, we both, or we all know, I hopefully that. Everything is changing. Yes, as, as the days go by. So even like we might start on a curriculum adoption, hopefully in the next few months. And by next fall, it could evolve and change again. Um, I think a lot of the changes, especially with reintroducing civics have been great. Um, some other things that have taken place as well, but I X O and that program takes into account all of those changes with that, which I think is a valuable. Asset to us as a district, but that's a great question. Yeah, and I'm excited. Hopefully, I don't know what capacity, but I'm excited to hopefully help serve on that committee as well, being a long time social studies teacher. Alright, so right here, we're just looking at last year's, uh, state assessments. Um, the reason that I put this on there is just to kind of show you guys with the yellow and green. How close we are as a district with our middle schoolers to being right there kind of at the state average with their near grade level. Um, the one glaring weakness that I would like to address is our science scores. And that's tied directly to the fact that we've been through four, uh, science teachers in four years. And this is the first year that we have the same, uh, gentleman returning to that position. Which I think will be, uh, huge for the seventh grade class, for us as a, as a school and as a district. Just for that continuity and for somebody to work with. Um, we also have Mr. Fasana teaching a section of as well. So him and. Mr. Ki- uh, King are able to collaborate and work on the curriculum together. So that's, that's the one thing I, I think will make some huge jumps. Um, especially in science with I X O, I think in math too, you're gonna see some huge growth. If we've already seen what we've seen in the first month, I can't imagine by the time we test in the spring. And that kind of leads me to the last thing, testing itself. Um, this is a district that's big on. Parents opting their, their students out of testing. And I'm gonna take it on, I'm not gonna say I'm taking on it as a challenge, but I'm going to work very hard. To meet with these students and parents and, and help to persuade them that, uh, the testing could be seen as a positive for everyone. And a lot of the times, some of the brightest, um, students in our district don't test and I, and I want to, uh, I wanna change that. And that, that should help all of us. Um, new classes, this is kind of exciting. We have, uh, four students that are eighth graders taking Algebra One, so they come over. Uh, during the school day and take, uh, Algebra with Mrs. Gordon. And then we have a completely brand new class on campus for both our high school and middle school students. And that is our Spanish program, uh, taught by Mr. Burho, who is also our E L D coordinator. So we now have Spanish. For both middle school and high school, giving us a, a second language, which is pretty incredible. Attendance, um, right now, we are up from last year, which is great. Um, and you can see the state average up there is sixty six percent. Uh, Mr. Solum's goal is ninety five percent, kind of as our attendance director. And we're currently right on the cusp of ninety percent. Um, if we could achieve ninety five percent, that would truly be incredible. But it is good to see, if you guys look at two years ago, what our attendance was. Uh, prior to the arrival of Mr. Gass, um, and now. Even a year later, you can see huge strides in the number of students that attend on a daily basis. And we all know if students don't attend, we can't learn. So there's attendance. Discipline, um, this is just, uh, what's taken place so far. You can see as students progress through grades, referrals go up. The majority of the referrals are simple, simple things like, uh, the assignment of maybe a detention. Um, or a teacher simply saying, you know, writing a referral for disruption in their classroom. Um, we have had a few other minor issues, horseplay and so on and so forth. But for the most part, the middle school level, uh, we've had a great, um, start to our year over there and a great sense of building a, a community at the middle school. Enrollment, there's our numbers currently. Uh, we are up from last year, which is great. Um, you can see the, just kind of the difference, um, in where we are. It looks like our biggest class is our sixth grade class, but they're pretty evenly balanced. The fifty seventh, the sixth grade level, and then with our eighth grade having fifty three. Um, really quickly, just turning to sports, we have fourteen young men out for football. We're playing a nine man schedule this year. Uh, which presents its own challenges just with finding other teams in the area that also play nine man. Um, at this point, they've played in two jamborees and also played one game. And, uh, they will play again, uh, in subsequent, or the next three weeks. Alright, our next one, our middle school volleyball program is massive. We have thirty one. Young ladies playing. We are so big, we in fact have two full teams, an orange team and a black team. And, um, that program just amazes me how big it is. Um, speaking of middle school athletics, I'm hoping to next year add a middle school cross country program. Um, it's kind of near and dear to my heart and I think it's another valuable, um, athletic sport we could add in the fall. To attract more athletes, uh, to a different sport. Um, now moving to clubs, one of our focuses this year is student engagement. And as you guys can see up there. We have a number of students, in fact eighty six percent of our middle school students are involved in at least one after school club. Um, the biggest one, as you can see, is band. And we've also had a brand new club, the Culinary Arts Club. Um, and then I guess drama is brand new as well, and they are hoping to, no, that's gonna happen, they're doing it. We are going to have, uh, our first play in years, uh, this spring, which I think is really exciting for all the middle school. And, uh, high school students. It will be a combination of six through twelve. Um, another big endeavor of mine has been to return students to campus. And as you guys can see up here, last year at the middle school level, we had sixteen students at home, online, full time. And currently we sit at zero. Um, I have made many a phone call and had many a meeting with parents. Students about returning to campus and how important that is for their academics and also for their mental health. And, and it's amazing to see, uh, to see them back in the building.
We do have some part time kiddos.
We do have some part time students. Currently at the middle school level, we have three that are part time. Um, new teachers, uh, Mrs. Warnicki's moved over from the elementary and teaching math. Um, Cheyenne is here, um, recently and she is teaching literacy. Our new, Mr. Burho is our new Spanish teacher. We have our first time ever at the middle school level. We have a counselor. Which is amazing, um, and myself is the new principal. And then Officer Brian Hamlin is here as well as the new, uh, S R O. And then finally, this is just a brief overview of our leadership program led by Mr. Crowe. And, uh, they're working on all kinds of things, including public speaking, communication, and putting on various field trips and assemblies. And the last thing, I don't know if I included a link, uh, but this can be found on the school website. Mrs. Stansberry and her class do an amazing job putting together. A student led newspaper, um, at the mid- middle school level. Um, and I, if you guys don't have a link, I can definitely find that, uh, for you and send it to you.
Questions for Jeremy?
Questions?
How many hours does he sleep?
Not, not a lot.
I just think so.
Alright, well, thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna go back to conferences.
Okay. Waiter? Alrighty, um, couple pictures on my front page here that are maybe different than your packet. Uh, from the Bulldog Bash. We actually did the Bulldog Bash during homecoming week. Which sounds kind of crazy, but it actually worked out to be pretty phenomenal. I wanna give a shout out to Sarah and. Uh, is kind of our lead person on the Bulldog Bash. Um, but, uh. It was, it was good to see a lot of our community and a lot of our service providers engaged in that. So today we had Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, we had our elementary folks doing, uh. Tons of activities, our middle and high school, uh, they were out for, uh, parent conferences, but I understand we had a lot of families. Um, is there something going on at TAF today? About our.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I think we had some kids go that direction. Uh, but we had a successful homecoming, uh, noise parade, I think was a little more organized. We got a few more tweaks we can. We can pull off on that next year to really make it streamlined. Um, I've been working with a group out of Portland called the Children's Institute. Uh, with Angie Fasana from the tribe, really around developing, uh, the early childhood program. In conjunction with the tribe, they have their faci- new facility. They're having trouble staffing it and so we're looking at ways to, uh, grow some of our. Early childhood, uh, teachers and support that. Uh, whether it's from our own kids or kids looking down the road to be early childhood teachers. Or if we can, uh, bring some resources to make it worth the compensation. And we did have one bond oversight meeting. Um, and we have another one of those coming up. Um, we talked about attendance, uh, and so we have a huge focus on that. Um, and we've, we've really, by bringing those kids back, uh, from online. Um, they were killing our attendance because we have to count them in that as well. Uh, and they would, they would vaporize on us. We actually have some college, uh, field trips and, uh. Other field trips that are going out, starting to see those happen. Um, we are really a community events hub here. And so as we think about, um, you know, we just hosted, uh. A funeral for, uh, one of our former custodians. Um, you know, we, we take that as a, as a great opportunity to, to showcase our school. Our charging stations are finally complete, um, so Roy can get his electric bus. Um, you know, you're.
No.
You're starting to see assessment results. Um, and we are, we are flat and struggling. And so we have a huge focus on. Um, that, uh, how we're going to change our achievement. Uh, we just spent our leadership team talking about curriculum, talking about training for staff, different things like that. I'm also, um, oh, I did a bunch of work on land easements. So the solar drive, we got that figured out and actually that, um. The update on that one is it, uh, that, that, that easement is actually a recorded easement in perpetuity with the land. It's, the question is, do we wanna try to collect a hundred dollars from the residents up there every year to do improvements on that road? Um, and so I, I will be working with, uh, Mylan on. Maybe he just takes care of that road and I don't have to collect a hundred dollars from twelve people and. Try to figure out how to mag chloride it or, you know, whatever we do in the past. Um, but trying to be a good neighbor there. Um, also met with Algers, uh, the meat folks over here. Cause we have a water line that runs through our baseball fields. Um, and so, uh, we're working through that because we may have, need a retention pond. Behind the field for parking lot development eventually for drainage. Um, and so he's kind of on notice and we're working with him as well, uh, to, to figure out how to potentially relocate that. Um. I'm really attracting, uh, a Monday attendance, particularly in our middle and high school. I think, I think there is a trend, um, that when high school, middle school kids do not show up. Our elementary kids stay home with them. And so we see this attendance piece. Um, I may look for a different type of calendar next year without the late start. More of a traditional calendar where like if we have an in-service day, we're off that day. Um, and not this wonky kind of late start Monday for part of our school and. I just see it being a detriment to our attendance. A lot of kids blow Mondays off, particularly at the high school. Um. Our pavilion down here, we're waiting on our certificate of completion. And that'll be good to go. They've taken down the construction fencing, so that project's done. Um, we're really struggling to find services, uh, for some of our oldest students, meaning. Um, you know, kind of those kids that don't fit in a traditional model, that may have some mental health challenges, discipline. That's pretty extreme. And we're spending, we're spending a lot of time and resources and, uh, trying to figure. Figure out how to, how to deal with that. Um, there, you know, we, I kind of call us the close enough but far away. We're close enough to Salem, everybody thinks we can access those services, but we're really far enough away. You know, by the time you transport a kid and get him home, um, it's not really a cost effective endeavor. And then kind of a highlight is we have three students, um, that go every, three nights a week to Lynn Benton, working in their machining program. Um, so TJ and, eh, he's actually in it, class with his kids. Um, and they go down and they're worri- they're learning how to run the big machines in the shop and get that machining piece and. Uh, two of those kids confided in me that they actually wanted to. Potentially complete that program, get their two-year degree, which I thought was pretty cool, um, in that process. Um, I threw in there just kind of a running attendance, you know, through the fall. You can see that we're, we were at seven ninety-five and as we do our ten day drops and get records requests. We're settling at about that seven hundred and sixty. So Lisa has adjusted. Our account with the state, so we're not gonna get a big hit in the spring of giving money back. Um, and then we talked a little bit about the naming concepts, how we're doing. Um, you know, my biggest concern now is, uh, where's the state and the shutdown and the impacts that that could have on. Um, our construction and different things like that. Um, you know, as we deal with contractors and resources and, um, getting, getting materials, so. Um, we're, we're getting closer to locking in and. Um, you know, I meet weekly with those guys to kind of understand where, where our projects are sitting. Questions on any of that?
Yes. You said you were struggling finding services for students, older students. What kind of services?
Um.
Is it academic services, behavior support services, or all of those?
Kind of, yes. You know, there's, there's, um. If I am a, if I am an, an intense kid. Um. And I've been in trouble with law enforcement and I've struggled to kind of fit into the typical school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I need that different look. Um, there's not a lot of alternative high school type program. There's not a, like a, a therapy based.
You mean like an alternative placement? Is that, is that.
Well.
Resources or do you mean pe- bringing people here or taking kids somewhere else?
Um, I always like to keep kids on my campus, but if, there's just not a lot of options, you know, once you kind of. Run through the usual suspects, so. Just, just a frustration, but, um, you know, we can, we try to do our best we can.
Any report on the student report? You don't have any?
Okay, yeah, I know from my report, some of the things on here were also mentioned or talked about by Mr. Gass and Mr. Earl. But, uh, starting on the middle school side, uh, I talked with the coach Ennis over there about the football team and. That he's, uh, the football team is there entering the final stretch of games. They've got a home game against Sheridan this week. Uh, Mr. Ennis said that the team has made great improvements over the season and he's really excited to see them play against Sheridan, see how they do. Uh, our volleyball team also has been showing great improvements. They've got a positive record so far with two more home games this week. Uh, against Nissaka tomorrow and Dayton on Wednesday. Uh, then on the high school side, uh, our cross country team, uh, they currently have fourteen members, eleven boys and three girls. Uh, they had their first home meet last Tuesday, where I talked with Coach Fasana. Uh, and he really appreciated all the support that he'd been shown from admin in regards to it, along with all the fan support and. Everyone just did a great job running there. Uh, our volleyball team at the high school also currently is at two league wins. They've got four games left, two home games. And two away games with their senior night coming up next Monday. Uh. Kind of the big thing that happened over on the high school side this past month was of course homecoming. Which was two weeks ago from September twenty ninth through October fourth. Which, uh, leadership had spent basically the entire school year up to that point, trying to plan it out, get all the details down, you know, figure out. What we wanted to do for theme and all of that. Where, uh, we had our, uh, normal assembly every day during the whole week, which kids seemed to love. I. I, uh, I myself and along with Mrs. Overfield have heard a lot of feedback from staff and students that. These were some of the best assemblies we've had in years. Some even saying that like they're the best they've ever seen up here, which is fantastic to hear. We've been really focusing this year with assemblies on, uh, getting more students involved, which is usually, there would just be the same couple kids coming down every time. So we wanted to have more variety of things to get more people that are coming on down and also ones that would involve the crowd. So it's, feels more like everyone coming together instead of just a couple of people representing everyone. Which I feel like we've been doing pretty good with. Of course, as the year goes on, it's probably gonna get a bit more difficult, but. You know, that's just a challenge for us to rise to. Uh, as mentioned, the noise parade definitely did feel more organized this year. Uh, I know the only real complaint I've heard was the way the buses were, or not buses, uh, the trailers were set up down there. Uh, in the parking lot, having to squeeze between the cars, so. We're, might look into adjusting how we have the buses set up. But kids got really into it. I know it got really loud, especially considering some students brought, uh, chainsaws without the heads on them and were revving those. The whole time, which was incredibly loud, but they were very spirited. Uh, then we have, we, uh, last year we started having the homecoming dance on Saturday instead of Friday, which we continued this year. Which has seemed to be a big improvement. And we're probably gonna keep with it since it gives us more time to set it up and gives people more time to prepare for it. And then also, uh, on October twenty third, as mentioned before, uh. Mrs. Kidd and Mrs. Gordon are taking the juniors and seniors to Oregon State University for a college campus tour. Uh, where they're also be getting up with, uh, some students going there that graduated from Willamina. Uh, National Honor Society is going to be having their induction ceremony later in this month. Uh, Mr. Fasana is currently working on. Uh, getting the details of that hashed out. So there's not a set in stone date, but it will be this month and then. Uh, I believe he's still planning on doing the annual canned food drive that we do on Halloween night for that. And also, uh, last year's yearbooks just came in a couple of weeks ago, because it started being distributed. About people started being able to pick them up. Uh, that's what I got, right? I went through that really quick.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The only other thing I was gonna put in there is, um, I think at our last meeting, F F A came and. Um, the board had talked about, do we contribute, um, from the school district to that trip? Um. And I know they've been out meeting with, uh, every possible group they can. Um, board's thought on supporting that and to what level?
Yeah, I think I, I'd be in support of supporting it. I would just wanna know what we're looking at in terms of budget and what the ask would be.
I think, I think in talking to Nise today, he, depending on what comes out of like the Sheridan Rotary and a few things like that, he said it's. He would be asking the board to complete maybe five hundred to a thousand, which. I mean, that's a lot of kids going a lo- long way, so. Um. I guess so we can.
Can we put it on as a decision item for next month?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're going, so I mean.
Is it something that needs to be a decision item today though?
Um. No, if the board would like me just to make sure that it happens, I can, and then I can let you know. I mean, I can take it out of my discretionary fund, I just.
I'm ready. I, we can make a motion to do it, if that's what we need. I just need, do we need an official motion or can we just say?
It just, eh.
Allocate.
She's, you can just tell me to allocate.
I would say allocate.
Lisa?
Typically, we've always gave twenty five hundred each time they've went, uh, the board is, from the board account, it's budgeted.
So. So up to what we normally do. Okay, I know they worked really hard on their fundraising and, you know, I'm not gonna hold them up, but.
Make a motion that the board support Nash, support F F A.
I move that we support F F A.
Attending national convention by.
Attending national convention with.
By ninety, two thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
From the school board.
Okay. Thank you.
Roy, can you second that?
Hi, John, mute, sorry, second.
Okay, all those in favor of providing two thousand five hundred dollars in support of Na- F F A's national convention trip, please say whether they're saying aye.
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 Pose, sentence, motion carries. Okay. That way it's official.
Yeah. Like it.
Okay, there were policies for review. Is there anything you wanted to add to those?
Yeah, I do. Um, the first one is the pretty much boilerplate O S B A. Personal electronic device policy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, before Evan gets out of here and, uh. Um, I, from, and, and Mr. Shertz chime in. But I have not seen a whole lot of chaos around cell phones, other than. I mean, uh, what are you seeing in a daily?
I wouldn't say chaos. There's a little uptick currently that we're just holding firm on. Um, it's that typical, okay, we're six weeks in. Are they really gonna hold us for the year? Or is it just the start? And it's just that, that little uptick that we just have to, us teachers just remind them, put them, start putting away.
But reminders work?
They're, they're working. During class time, I don't see them. Um, there's an uptick halls and lunchtime. Discrepancy and misunderstanding, but.
Evan, what are you seeing?
Uh, very similar stuff. For me, it, it kind of just varies a bit teacher to teacher, but. The teachers who are enforcing it, I've seen few to no cell phones being used in classes. Some of the teachers who. But either are a bit more lax or can't pay as much attention to each individual student. I see a bit more, but it's a big difference from.
Good. So my, my, I, I like those comments because I believe the keeping this general. But also having the, uh, piece behind it, the request for personal. But also having the uh, piece behind it, the request for personal electronic device exemption. So if a kid's on an IEP or they're diabetic and part of the program runs, you know, there, there's that room for the exception, but I think. Keeping it broad in general seems to be working for us, um, cuz technology changes so darn fast. I hate to get us too detailed and pin ourselves in, in that process, so. Um, I like this boilerplate uh, policy. You can see the current policy behind it, it's about half as long. And then the other one is the visitors to district facilities, our current policy is literally four paragraphs. Um, and I would like to move to, I found this good one from Cascade, uh, which basically. Um, defines what a visitor is, where they can be, um, you know, a lot of times people believe. We're seeing an uptick in, in uh, parents, um, you know, going straight to classrooms and confronting other kids. Um, teachers, and really the only public place in a school is the front office. The rest of it, you can be invited to go into, or we can invite you to leave there. But truly, the only public place in a, in a public school is that front office, until we clear you, you get signed in. Um, and that, you know, with, with our campus built the way it is, you have a shop, you have modulars, you have. Um, the middle school, and so we've had, in my tenure here, we've had multiple cases where people just kind of go to those spots. Without checking in first, and, and it's, it's a safety hazard. You know, so I would like to move us uh, to more of a detailed piece like you see from Cascade. And kind of along that, in the volunteer mode as well, defining what a volunteer is. Um, and kind of more detailing uh. Kind of expectations around those uh, volunteers as well. Um, Cascade, I think, has had some of the same and similar issues in talking to their superintendent, so they've done a lot of work over the last couple of years. Um, revising those two policies, so I'd be open to any comments on those. Question? Guys over there, like, got snacks or something?
No, that's, you're talking just, if they wanna visit in the junior high, they gotta go to the junior high office first, or?
Yep, yeah, but we've, we've had cases where people parked their car, go on the, on the playground and, and rip some kid. You know, because Joey said that, you know, somebody got punched in the ear at home, you know, I mean, it's. And I've had high school issues with adults just going into the shop and, you know.
Is it still district policy? And perhaps a reminder needs to be sent out, but is it still district policy that anybody that comes on campus and. Maybe I didn't read this close enough, but anybody that comes on campus has to be checked in at the office?
Yes. And you get a visitor badge and you sign in, and that's really because if we have to evacuate or we have a drill, we need, we grab that list. And we're looking for these people.
In the case of parents going directly to.
Playground?
Playgrounds, are, do they get trespassed?
Um, depends on the case, uh, they definitely get talked to, and we definitely report it to our school resource officer and. You know, but it, it, we're in a day and age where we're seeing more custody battles, you know, we're seeing people in these kind of like. You know, where we have to officiate it, well, to do that after they've been on the playground and talk to a kid is tougher than. You know, doing it in the front end, so just trying to be more, more defined in our policies and that, so that's why you see those in there.
Okay, any questions about policies?
Nope, so you'll see those get cleaned up and then I'll probably bring them for uh, approval in our next meeting.
I think, and we're moving on.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Do we have parents that go directly to the middle school, I mean, do we need a sign or something that says all visitors? Report to the middle school or the high school office for middle and high school?
No, cuz they can go, they can go directly to the middle school office.
Okay.
But I've had people go in the indoor and never go to the office.
Sure.
So.
That's where we might need signs to.
Yeah, so we can increase our significance.
To make sure that they go to the office.
And, and there's a big bulldog-headed sign right there that says that, but.
I think my bigger concern, and maybe it's just me being an elementary parent myself, but, not with kids here, but still. Is that parents or anybody in particular is making it onto the playground to address kids, and this is not, there's a lot going on, this is not a knock on staff. But is there a way to be more mindful so that that's not hap- like, is it setting up like? People at the entrances or something, so that's not, I, cuz I feel like that is a situation where. Parents could even know that that's a policy and still they don't care at that moment. Um, and that's why I was asking about trespassing, cuz I feel like that should be like a never happening. But, and I'm sure you're considering that post that, but I just wanted to make that known, like, maybe. Policy doesn't matter at this point anyway, because they have circumvented that, so.
Yeah, they'll do it anyway.
Being more mindful as staff, is that?
We'd do a lot of reminders and what to check for.
That is, please, that is not me knocking on staff, I'm just trying, policy doesn't matter at this point, and is there a way that we can make sure that's not happening?
And maybe we could get a sign out on that gate right there, you know, most checking at the office, you know, just as extra reminder.
Yes.
But violators will be trespassed, seriously.
There you go.
I mean, I, I would say yes, that would.
Just to make sure we're all kosher with the legality.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Verbiage and all that, that's.
Okay, I think now we're moving into.
Division twenty-two?
Yes.
All right, I will, I will condense this the best I can, so division twenty-two, and you got a lot of information in the packet. Is really the standards that um, govern public education in Oregon, and so. Every year, I have to go through a checklist, which you have that Excel spreadsheet. Um, and I put notes in most of those categories. In that, but essentially, it, they, they really focus on high-quality. Uh, learning experiences aligned focused educational systems, safe and inclusive schools. Committed, supported staff and in, uh, engaged partners and communities, and so that has shifted a little bit over the last couple of years. And so this is really background information for you. And when we go through these, I have to basically put yes or no, or give an explanation of why. We are doing what we're doing or not doing what we're doing in that process, and so. I'm gonna hit, see if I can get this link to open up. Nope, that didn't work, hang on one sec. Didn't notice about my mouse. Did you go? Move the whole slide? Alright, timeout. So there's a couple of things that, that work this. That is so weird, I just lost that whole slide with the link. Um, what they do is they use this to monitor, and this is a, an example. Um, I will tell you right now, this is our most positive example of looking at third grade scores um, from last year to this year. Looks like we did really well. However, this is not the same cohort of kids, so one way to increase your scores is to change the kids. Um, so it's really a system check, if you will, so if we can continue to get this kind of growth from grade level to grade level. Um, that would be super exciting. Um, in your packet, cuz I lost my link there, it looks like, you have a piece that looks like this. It's got an Excel spreadsheet with all the yellows on it, things like that, you can see at the far right column, all the yeses. So for instance, do we meet the home requirements answers, yes, and we're currently teaching the finance and the career pathways. Modified diploma had some new things that we've actually implemented there um, to engage our families. So when you look through here, there's only one no, and that one no, I did get an exemption uh, for one year on. And that was our Menstrual Dignity Act, which is the um, putting uh. Feminine protection products in all bathrooms. Uh, feminine hygiene, thank you. And uh, we are not in complaining that, but we're working on that with our construction and different things like that, so. That was the only one that I had that was a no that I reported. Some of these were not required. Um, I think we've done a better, a better job in the um, partners and communities. Um, as I kind of gauge where we are at with um, you know, our work on our tag plan that, that Shanna had upgraded. You know, our complaint process, we've had some complaints and successfully uh, navigated those to uh, satisfaction. You know, we have uh, a policy on drug testing, I know Roy, that's been one of yours, uh, but we don't necessarily implement it. Uh, but we do have policies around steroids and performance-enhancing drugs. Our health services, we nailed down, so this kind of basically is every component, the state has basically said. This is what schools should be and look like in Oregon. So, some of that great bedtime reading, if you're into uh, those opportunities, so. But every year I have to present this to you, give you an update, and then you accept that and uh, approve it. So if you don't have any questions, we can.
I just have one question on the. Uh, the Equity Advisory Committee. Um, who, have you guys designated your Equity Advisory, like, uh, person is? Your liaison or, isn't there a part of your staff?
Well, I'm, I'm running it.
Okay.
I'm running it, and so today we actually met, um, and normally Bethany's there from the tribe. Um, but uh, she was not there today, so um, in that, what we do is we actually run that as the front end of our leadership. We take the first thirty minutes and it's issues around, are we doing with our relationship with our tribe, are there any issues we're seeing? Within our student body, um, you know, one of the things I'd like to do is probably get Evan. In the game on that as well, to have a student, get my student representative in there, um, it's kind of tough to get. Kids involved in those conversations, but he would be a good one, I just thought of him today, in that process.
Does the leadership team, do you guys take notes and do like forty?
Yeah, we have an agenda, we just met today, so I haven't touched it.
Could there be a specific section for the Equity Advisory Committee, whatever topics were discussed specific to that in a separate section?
Yep. Yep, and we, and I think I want to, um, yeah, the way our agenda, somewhere in this chaos. Um, was an agenda sitting on this table probably earlier, but, you know, we'll uh. It was kind of optional up until this year and now we're, we're live, so.
I have notes too, from all, all the meetings, I keep all of them.
I'm just wondering, and I, that, I think that would be a cool opportunity if families knew that you guys were meeting specifically to look at like equity. If parents had specific bigger ideas or things that they wanted to bring, I think it would be good for them to know that that would be a good time to. Like be in conversation with the district about those things.
Well, and, and, and Sarah also runs the title.
In the Eric's committee?
Six, is it six?
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I think we have a lot of opportunities for conversations and I think they're, they're starting to happen.
And it would also be cool, I'm just speaking while I'm thinking, it would also be cool if to, cuz I know there's a lot of parents that want to be involved, it's just like. Time, right, everybody, time, but if there was some kind of report.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna add something else, so maybe it's just taking pieces of reports that already exist, that exist, but like being able to share out to parents all of the. Different committees and groups that exist and the work that's being done in those, and the event that they do find. They have the time to be a part of something, that they know kind of where those things are at, there's like an update. That they can kind of look to and know what conversations are happening or what events are coming up or what kind of planning, and maybe that can include PTS, so. The parent, Indian Parent Committee, that Advisory Equity Committee, whatever those would be, but it would be cool to do like a fan or a. I don't know, like a family report or something, so that parents can keep up with those things and know where those are at.
Okay. Put that on our agenda and talk about it tomorrow.
So I think all of these will all require motions.
Yes, but they're all separate.
Yes, so, we're gonna move for the division twenty-two.
Yes.
I move to approve the division twenty-two standards evidence for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as presented.
I'll second.
So it's been moved in seconded to approve the division twenty-two, twenty-two standards evidence. For twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pos, extensions, motion carries. Okay, next is the annual report from the Department of Education, or the Integrated.
Integrated Programs Annual Report?
Yes.
So this.
I'm going to approve the, oh, go ahead.
Well, hang on, let me, let me say one thing, um, so if you remember not long ago, we, we approved. The, this grant moving forward, I have them to report and you have to accept. The twenty-four, twenty-five results of that, and so, um, you have some background in there around. You know, the summary of what integrated, uh, it's those categories that we talked about earlier. You know, we've, we have seen marked improvement in our elementary, as far as uh, consistency of instruction, I know Sarah's working really hard on that. To make sure we have a good vertical, um, you know, we still are struggling for those summative results. But we continue to refine our teaching practice. We're beginning to see a shift in our tier one, which is our universal curriculum, um, and which is making more, our population more proportional. Around our ability to um, do our interventions, so we're getting the right kids in the right slots, so to speak. And I think we've seen a bit of an implementation dip in math and, in language arts, um, as we're kind of doing that, and so. I know like, you know, Chris and I have had tons of conversations at the secondary around how do we make up this gap? The kids came into, um, you know, came out of COVID, but into particularly our secondary, we're really struggling, but you heard Jeremy talk about. All the skills that we're trying to close that gap with, and so, um, you know, we also get a, need a culture. I think we get some false positives in there around. Our best kids aren't, aren't taking the test, and we need people to show what they know, so that we can get school ratings and, and things that get us off the radar. Um, you know, and, and it's not a, I'm not doing that to force somebody's political agenda, it's really just. We make decisions educationally for kids based on results, and if we're getting garbage results, then I'm not meeting the needs of kids and. My highest kids aren't necessarily getting pushed because they're not, you know, we've, I don't know, we had kids that got placed in classes, it was like, whoa, I know how to do all this, and it's like. Well, you didn't, you didn't show me on the test, you know, cuz we kind of placed you accordingly, so. You know, we're trying to change that culture, Jeremy's doing a great job, and then you can kind of, um, you know, see back over the course of this grant. In those uh, progress markers, I thought it was important to share those, just because Carrie was on the front end of it, I kind of picked it up midstream. And mine are really the, the green and the blue, um, and we have different lenses, you know, Carrie, Carrie looked at things different than I did and. Um, that's okay, cuz there's, it's really just kind of a self-check, so, that's what I would say with those.
Are there incentive, can, can Jeremy put in some incentives for the kids that do, you know, take the test and?
No, and I can't punish the kids for not doing it.
Well, that's why I say not punish, but give incentives, like, you know, if kids are at a. Certain attendance, they do a reward trip or they've done that in the past, could they do something along that line that might encourage some of those kids to say, oh yeah, you know what, if I can?
Yeah, I, I would, I would focus around growth, um, you know, cuz some of our kids are starting out pretty low. But it, you know, if we could, we could look at some different opportunities and I'd have to double check, you know, Oregon's pretty. But it, you know, if we could, we could look at some different opportunities, and I'd have to double check, you know, Oregon's pretty interesting when it comes to, um, you know. We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to be strategic in how we pull that off.
Right, I'm ju, I'm just asking, because, yeah, our, and it's, it's crazy that some of our best kids are choosing to not take the test.
Or they just Christmas tree it.
Or are we doing ASVAB or PSATs? Are they opting out of that too, or where are we at on those?
We haven't offered PSAT, so we'd like to get into that too. It's a, it's a whole shift in testing culture that Jeremy and I are working on.
Okay.
Um, you know, and it, it, yeah, I mean, and we met with the Lynnfield President today, and, you know, they wanna do some things to help us incentivize, and, you know, they want, they want some of our kids up that direction. And they're willing to work with us on some of those, uh, test blind, test optional, because if a kid does test and do well, it helps him with getting more resources.
Sure.
So, good question.
I'll move to approve the integrated grant as presented.
I got a question.
Okay.
I'm just waiting, from a teacher, like, how are they feeling in the classrooms? Cause I am a firm believer that state data is not gonna show us everything that's happening, so how are teachers feeling about this year? How are teachers feeling about how kids are taking curriculum in, how they're engaged? Like, are, are they feeling good about that, or is?
Just from the elementary, we don't really use it to guide a whole, it, when you take the state assessment data and you break it down, it just, it's in general strands.
Yeah.
So you can't, like, the one thing it's really good for is kinda like looking at the grade level as a whole, like, oh wow, we bombed geometry at this level.
Yeah.
You know, at the big level.
Yeah.
But as far as like drilling down, um, we put a lot more stock into the formative and summative data that we do down here.
Yeah.
Um, like we're doing data meetings every eight weeks to talk about individual kids.
Yeah.
And legging skills, and how we can address those and modify interventions. So that's really what we focus on, is more the summative data, this end, not so much the state, because that's kinda like endgame.
Yes, and I'm wondering, cause I'm, I'm, is data that, and you may not know this, because we wouldn't know until after they do state testing, but in your experience, I guess in the last, I feel like the testing dip has happened post-COVID pretty heavily, like that parents were like, yeah, we're not doing that. Um, in your experience, is the data that you guys see, that you, your progress monitoring data, is that data reflective of what you're seeing on state scores?
No, not at all. So there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Yes.
Um, there's the questions on the state test that are kind of belker. Um, but then also there's the format of the test. And so really, we, we try not to teach to the test, we try just to teach the standards.
Yeah.
However, because the format of the test is so different than what we do in the class, we almost have to teach how to take the test, in order to take the test. And so if our kids are unfamiliar with it, or if they haven't done a whole lot of practice with that format, the, the assessment results are gonna be skewed.
I would say not even almost, we actually do, the third through fifth grade teachers do actually take them through like how to, how to even log into the test, how to use the tools that are available to you, uh, and kinda go through like the practice. And what we're really trying to do is that, even though we're not really using it to inform at this end, we are trying to get them to be able to be test takers when it comes time for it. So really familiarizing them with it, and making it so they're not scared to take the test. Um, and just really encouraging the participation, because we are coming out of that era where just everybody was opting out. So we're really just trying to, it's like, it, you know, we're trying to just encourage them, like, it's, this isn't who you are, but this is just something you have to do.
And, and you only had a couple opt-outs at the elementary.
We only had one opt-out at the elementary. And we really do try to incentivize it as much as possible. Like we, in the past, we've made it a whole big week. Like we're, we've, we've done a parade of testers, and we have buddy classrooms where they write them a note every day, or give them a little goodie every day, like a roll of Smarties, or a peppermint to have during the test, or a pencil, something just to kinda cheer them on. That way, the little kids kinda look up to, oh, I can't wait till this happens to me. Um, and the big kids like, okay, you know, I'm getting that encouragement, so. Um, so we have pretty good participation up, down here. But really, one of the incentives for our kids is they only get one opportunity a year to take this test, which by the time they get into middle school and high school, the more opportunities they've seen it, and have had an opportunity to take it, the better prepared they'll be. So we really try to push that.
Thank you, I, I'm just, I'm a big proponent of, I know that state tests are not bigger picture, and like if there's a way, it also feels very, it's difficult to put on teachers who are doing all of the things every single day, to also then have to teach kids how to take tests, that are not reflective of how they are used to taking, you're like, you're setting them up for not being successful, or not giving their best in that way. I feel like there's the ability to advocate for maybe something different, but at the high school level, and I'm just gonna ask you, and if you do not want to respond, totally fine, but you're the only ones here. Do you guys feel like it is more burdens, like, do you feel like the state tests that are being taken right now are reflective of where your students are at, when you see those results?
I've not seen the results of the state test my entire ten years working. And the fact that they only get them, they only take them as a junior, so they take them as an eighth grader. They don't take them again until junior.
Yeah.
As far as I know, the results are come out in July, and something happens.
So you don't know if the, you.
I know we're below average, and we're not where I would like to see it. When I started, I was told growth was happening. But I don't know where we lie, I couldn't answer that question on where we lie. I, from glancing over shoulders, I excel, would do a better prepared of how to answer the test questions than my personal test that I give the kids.
Yeah.
In math, but I can't speak, I'm, those are just my initial thoughts right off the spot. And I don't know where to begin. But it's a piece of information that, the biggest piece is it's no longer a graduation requirement. So kids don't care about them. In the past, they used to have to pass it, or if they didn't, then I'd have to do work samples with them. But since it was removed as a graduation requirement, we, I don't know if it's been an uptick or not of opting out, but they are being opted out of to a certain rate, but it takes, what, five kids? And we're already outside of the threshold that we're allowed, or less. But it, it's, it's hard to tell from a junior standpoint, from a high school standpoint, because it's three years since they took it last. And it's the only time they take it. I mean, it disrupts my class, but I manage it and work with it, and go forward.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I think Roy made a motion, and I think we needed a second.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the integrated grant as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, oh, Roy, were you in favor?
I, I, aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Okay, I think the next one is.
Resolution?
Yep, resolution for the CLSD grant. Any more discussion?
Yeah, this is, we're getting money.
We just need a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash zero-one, transferring of appropriations for receiving the CLSD grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six oh-one, transferring of appropriation for receiving the CLSD grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. And now, I think it's the Eastman, or the Cemetery.
So in your packet, you have the legal opinion on the Highlands Cemetery. And so, my recommendation tonight is to, um, for those in the audience, we own a cemetery. It's a school district. But we want to, uh, get that off of our books if possible, and get it, get it with somebody who will care for it and honor it. It's a historically recorded cemetery. And so, tonight, all we're doing is declaring it as excess. That allows me then to work with different entities around the valley, to see if anybody is interested in it. Um, most likely, we would transfer it over for a minimal dollar amount. You know, you, there's not a huge market for cemeteries, but, um, there are folks out there that do acquire these, pick them up. I think Justine said, uh, the tribe might even be interested in looking at it, uh, cause they may have some descendants in there. Um, so we'll, once we declare it, then I can have conversations with folks around what's most appropriate, and, uh, where that should end up. Also, there is a small checking account that goes with it, um, that has like seven hundred dollars in it, that we would then close out, and try to get people, I think the signers on it are like in their nineties, so we're trying to move quickly to get, get that closed out, so that we can, uh, not have bigger issues to deal with, so. Any questions on that?
Where's it at?
It's at the top of, what did we decide it was?
Buck Hollow and Rock Creek.
So it's the top of Rock Creek on the left, past the Buck Hollow turnoff.
I think it's the oldest.
Oh, okay, I know what's at.
Where they just clear cut a bunch of stuff on the right-hand side, it's on the left.
Wouldn't even know that there's a cemetery there.
I think it's a home cemetery.
It's before O, O.C. Yocum's place.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's got a pipe fence around it.
Yep.
Gate, big couple pine trees in it.
It's gotta be an old one.
Yep.
Well, I move to approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash two, declaring the Highlands Cemetery as surplus property for the purpose of donation, or to be declared as surplus property.
I'll second.
I moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six oh-two, declaring the Highlands Cemetery as surplus property for the purposes of donation, or to be declared as surplus property. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, sentience, oh, aye as well, motion carries. Okay, I think the last one is the cheerleading.
Our hostages.
Yeah, our co-op cheerleading agreement with Sheridan.
So you have in front of you an OSAA agreement, um, similar to, um, other co-op agreements, and, uh, we have for soccer, I believe, with Sheridan, this one is cheerleading. We had just missed, um, we had just missed the cutoff at our last board meeting. And so, uh, we wanted to officially get that done, but, uh, if you were at homecoming, we had, how many did you say?
We have twenty-seven on roster right now.
Yeah, that was crazy, it was awesome. I thought, wow, the opposing team brought, and I was like, no, those are ours, click right on. So, um, we appreciate our kids having that opportunity, and, and you all running that for us, and, and providing that.
So I'll move to adopt the co-op cheerleading agreement with Sheridan School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, or moved to adopt a co-op cheerleading agreement with Sheridan School District for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, we're excited, we're also accepted for nationals, so our cheerleaders are heading to Vegas this year.
Wow.
That's exciting for our woman and updates.
Great.
Um, future agenda items, we have a tour, C.T.G.R. Education Facility Tour, then regular session.
Yeah, but in April, uh, April and I talked about getting a, right after first year, potentially getting a, uh, meeting out at the tribe, we tried to do at least one, not a couple a year out there, and thought maybe working with Angie and, and those, uh, folks out there to get a tour of, of the new facility for board members, and doing that beforehand, and then having our meeting out there in, uh, in either the preschool area, or maybe your building. So, we don't occupy the, the big council chambers, but doing it more in the school side of the house. Oh, okay, wherever, so. Any other agenda items, board members? Yeah, we got a lot done tonight, folks, I appreciate it.
Okay. I'm just gonna call this adjourned, unless there's anything else. Going to adjourn.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.